Okay.
For the public and for the board. I wish to discuss this district's indifference to parents and citizens of this district. I believe safe and secure schools began first and foremost with culture. This district has elected its disregard established as a policy that welcomes parents and members of this community to come into the classroom and into the school. We even highlighted it in tonight's annual meeting. In direct violation of their own policy. This has had a detrimental effect on our children in the culture of the building. We simply ask that you revert back to establish this your policy that allows for parents and other community members to access the school when appropriate. Those times that are appropriate have been well established to be before and after school begins as well as at lunch. Additionally, we ask that you reaffirm parental involvement in our students' education. To reaffirm what communication is acceptable with teachers. This should not simply be left to some digital app. The belief that preventing parents from being involved in their children's education or even being welcome to be present in the school to be involved in their children's education somehow creates a safer school is a ruse. This district has been unable to furnish any established best practices beyond the word of calling other districts. We, me personally, through my staff and others, have attempted to contact upwards of fifty districts, public schools in the state, to which none of them have addressed our questions or even provided an answer, short of addressing us to go to their website to read their policies, which closely mirror ours. The only districts that have confirmed anything to us are private. Assumption allows parents access before, after, and during prayer. Parents are even provided with key cards to the building to drop their children off before and after school. That district welcomes parents, includes them in their children's education. How is it that if this is what districts refer to as far as their policy that addresses this concern is that listed as a best practice? Best practice in my world is documented reality. I operate a multimillion dollar resort in a town that generates seventy percent of the funding for this district. I have to adhere to GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. I am audited. Everything I do is record, and I can be taken to court any single day. But yet this district hides behind safety and security and says, "Best practice here." But where is the best practice? Where is this documented? You have not provided that in any sense of the word. Failure by this board to reaffirm existing policy and that parental involvement is encouraged will be in clear violation of not only state but federal law. Wisconsin statute one-one-eight point one-three, pupil discrimination prohibited. No person may be denied admission to any public school or denied participation in being denied benefits of or be discriminated against in any curricular, extracurricular, pupil services, recreational, or other program or activity because of a person's sex, race, religion, national origin, ancestry, creed, pregnancy, marital or parental status, sexual orientation, or physical, mental, emotional, or learning disability. Our kids have emotional needs that are going unmet by this district. We wish to address those at appropriate times before and after instruction and at lunch. Simply telling us to make friends with employees of the school and let them address the needs of our children is ridiculous.
Thank you, William. Three minutes is up. Appreciate the thoughts and comments. Any other public comments for tonight?
Uh, I'll go. Katie Jason, I live at sixty-four Fox, which is important to see here. Uh, I have two boys currently in first grade and um, four K at Humke. So uh, my son obviously went to school here last year. Um, you know, walked him in, um, found out that the policy was changing this year. Um, to say I was disappointed is pretty much an understatement. Um, I guess what I would ask is if I have ceded my rights as a parent the moment that my children cross onto school district property. Um, I know everybody, I, I think I speak for all the parents here when I say that our children's safety is also at the forefront of our minds. So for anyone here to think that you guys care more for our kids' safety, I mean, I think we care more for our kids' safety. So I, I don't think it's that we have a disregard for safety at all. But again, this is before, you know, the school time is actually starting. If I want to walk my children into their classroom, me as a parent, me as a taxpayer should be able to do that. I'm not saying that we need to throw out, you know, safety practices or protocols, you know, make a single entrance at a main point. Um, I can certainly appreciate safety being in law enforcement myself, but I think to say that parents in the schools are, you know, more of a safety concern than not, I mean, that's, to me, that's not only upsetting. I just feel like we as parents, we as taxpayers have given the school district frankly too much power. If, if I can't walk my kid to their classroom, I, I think that's ridiculous. So um, like I said, I, I can appreciate what they do at different schools. Um, you know, I keep hearing that, well, they don't do it here, they don't do it there. This, every other school district does it. I don't really care. This is Nacousses School District. This is Nacousses. Um, again, I'm not saying throw out your safety protocols. Absolutely keep them in place because no one wants my kids', you know, my kid's safety is paramount to me. But I also don't feel threatened if any of these other parents want to walk their children to a classroom. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And it was Katie or?
Katie.
Yeah. Uh, any other public comments for tonight?
Um, and it was Jackie Cole. I'm also a town of Rome supervisor. So um, I don't have children in the school district. I was unaware of this policy. And I know you're coming to report to the town of Rome, not report to address the town of Rome in November. Maybe you could add this topic to your list of topics that will be presented on, um, just to help the residents there that have come here tonight and other residents to understand the policy better.
Thank you, Jackie.
And Jack, do we have your contact information?
Um, I did sign in, but I can fill out something else.
Just to make sure that we, I have a way to connect. So, thank you.
Thank you again. Uh, any other public comments?
Hello. Uh, my name's Kaz Conrad. You guys know me. I've been here a couple of times, um, to speak on this issue, but I'm here tonight as I promised I would be. Um, I wanted to just follow up regarding the workshop meeting that we had last week. I'm glad that we were able to have that meeting to express our concerns about this policy. Um, I just want to reiterate that it's important that we hear back from you, the board, regarding this, um, and not just from Mr. Black. I think that we are here to express our concerns because we want to make sure that something is done about this. And we want to know that if something is not done about this, then why that is the case. Um, I've been talking with a lot of parents for the past few months regarding this, and the exact same feeling is there that it's unfair. It's not being thought through completely. It's not taking into account our perception or our position on it. Um, and unfortunately, that was made clear at the workshop meeting that the weight of the law enforcement um, position on this is heavier than the weight of the parents' position, and that's just not fair because they're our children. Um, so another thing that I want to bring up is that I've been volunteering in the school, um, since this policy was put in place. Um, that prompted me to get involved in that way. And I've seen a couple of things. I've seen parents coming in on occasion or different things, or bringing stuff to their students' classroom, like snacks, or volunteering to help in classrooms, um, various field trips. And every single situation that has occurred has gone without any issue. It's been flawless. It's been, you know, for the most part, um, comfortable. It doesn't seem chaotic or hectic at all. And to say that, you know, ten or fifteen minutes in the morning with a handful of parents coming into the building to do something similar would be any more detrimental to the safety, that just doesn't make sense, and there's really no way to prove that. Um, but what I have seen, and what I'm sure other people who have been in the building in the mornings can say, is that when parents have been in the building for various reasons, it's been just fine. So I think that needs to be taken into account, and we're deciding if there can be an exception or compromise made to the policy to allow just a little more wiggle room for the parents that need it, so that the parents feel comfortable and safe that their children are going to school feeling supported in this one extra way. It's not too much to ask. Um, I've also seen the identic program being used on several mornings, and it's been successful. I've had to have help myself signing in when I wasn't volunteering, when I was going to, um, assist in a classroom for a classroom activity. And it was easy. It was flawless. It worked well. I came in, I signed in, I went down and did what I was there to do, then I came back and I signed out and I left. It was the exact definition of a safety, um, policy being used appropriately and effectively. And I don't see, I don't think that there is a way to say that that couldn't be just as effective in this exact same um, scenario for those parents who want to come in and direct their kids off to their classroom. Again, like I said at the workshop, this would be within the realm of all of the protocols and all of the policies that were laid out in that safety policy. It would say before school starts outside of instructional time. So I just urge this board to keep all those things in perspective moving forward. We plan on being here as often as we have to, to make sure our voices are heard and to make sure compromises reached.
Thank you, Kaz. Um, any other public comments for tonight? I just wanted to, um, I guess the board is allowed to ask questions, so I wanted to summarize if my summary is right, um, to the public tonight. Um, it sounds like we have some common ground with both values, safety. Um, did you know of the policy to go away, but just for, um, some sort of criteria to realize? Is, is that something I think correct? Summarizing? Yes.
And you have no public comments on mine?
No.
No.
Okay. All right. Uh, thank you again for the public comments. You guys' voices heard. Um, like I said, I think we have some common grounds here. Um, we're gonna move forward then with just showcasing schools and student learning. Is there a CWSA update?
I don't know if anybody from the, um, CWSA board. Is there, you just think those things have been happening there, Mr.?
Uh, so we have about thirty-two students enrolled in CWSA, which is, for those that may not be aware, it's a, uh, an option for a charter school for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Uh, really heavily involved in project-based learning. It's a great option for those, for those students that are looking for an alternative education, so to speak. Um, some of those projects have been, uh, fun to get into with those kids. A lot of times they're going and, uh, on individual field trips to, to mine different minerals, uh, to meet with somebody that is a parachute expert. Um, it's just, it is fascinating to, to see the kids come back all excited about, uh, their project and, and what they're learning. Uh, they have a showcase event. Uh, they don't necessarily do parent-teacher conferences. They do kind of a showcase event where parents and everybody come in and they have a show what they have been learning. Uh, that's coming up, I believe, in November sixth. Those are their
CWSA daily today?
CWSA daily, yes, thank you. They've been, one of their projects is working on a newspaper. So they have publications. They've, I had three different publications. Uh, I think myself has been featured in one. I know Dr. Black has been featured in one. It's kind of a little interesting in who they, uh, researched and, and decided to interview. Uh, but it's, um, uh, it's been a, a great opportunity for kids to go through that process of interviewing, researching, uh, and then coming up with that final draft, putting that paper together, and then, and then getting that out. Thank you for bringing that up.
Any, uh, follow-up questions for State of the USA? Any? All right, and our student representative, Alexa Borbul, I'm sure she's got some actual current ideas going on. Any high school updates from her?
Uh, she sent in, I'll read off here. The, so Student Council will be hosting a blood drive on Wednesday, November first. So if you haven't signed up yet, don't jump online, red cross. Goal is to collect thirty-seven units. They already have forty-nine donors signed up. She's super proud of the Nacousses High School community for having thirty-seven students and staff willing to donate. Haunted Hallways was this past Saturday. It was a success. Uh, just over two hundred kids came through, got a lot of positive feedback from the community. And then October is Depression Education and Awareness Month. Then the speaker will be coming from the Family Center next week, uh, to talk with the student body about that important topic.
Keith, did you explain what haunted hallways is?
Oh, sure. Yeah. So haunted hallways, the various clubs and organizations from, uh, the high school come together. They decorate the hallways for Halloween, and then they stand at various points through the hallways. And then kids come through dressed up in their costumes, and they wander through the building and grab, well, not grab, they get the plates, candy, bags, buckets, whatever the kids want. And then there's also like face painting, everything like that that happens year to year. So that's, you know.
The depression education that you spoke about, is that being caught by a different facility?
Yeah, that's a facilitator that comes from the Family Center.
Oh, from the Family Center?
Yeah. And then, um,
What question do you have?
Well, yeah.
Um, with regard to haunted hallways, there were a lot of parents and other people in there. What efforts did the district take after, um, that haunted hallway so I'm sure the school was secure at that time?
Uh, secure in the sense of overnight security?
Just that nobody was in the building.
So, um,
That nobody just remained in the building?
Yeah, so we have an alarm system, um, that goes on. It's an automatic alarm system that goes on. And, uh, I did not get a twelve oh one AM alarm call. There are sensors in the building so that if somebody were to start moving around the building, the alarm com- company would call me, the alarm company calls dispatch, dispatch sends an officer, I meet the officer, and
Are they in all the rooms or just hallways?
What's that?
Are they in all the classrooms or just hallways?
Uh, they're in various points throughout the building. So there are various rooms throughout the building.
So it's still within the realm of possibility that somebody could have remained in that school after that event?
No, no, that, I mean, after, after the event, yes, that would be possible, but at midnight and that alarm would go on um, at that point. But I guess I would say, you know, as far as for the high school, I'm, you know, not going to engage in much of a debate here, except to say after, you know, for us at the high school, we operate a lot of community events. You know, we aren't, like, when we have a basketball game or volleyball game, obviously have events that, we bring the community in. And then the high school also operates in a different function in that we also have the fitness center that's open to the community when we don't have students in the building. So that those elements play in there, that we, the, the, the high school operates as a much more community-facing than, you know, than some of the other schools do by the nature of how high school operates.
So to clarify your comments, outside of instructional time, the community is welcoming to the school. Is that a fair statement?
Various, uh, not at a, not at appropriate times, but I think, you know, that's, that's seven AM. So at the high school, seven AM, our doors are locked.
What time does school start?
Seven thirty. So.
Thank you.
Any other follow-up questions for, um, Keith or I guess Alexa from her email that she sent over?
And then she also wanted me to, uh, talk about the spirit point competition. We do have a spirit point competition each year, and students, the grade levels earn points, you dress up days when you're events, uh, attending events. And this year, the juniors have to be followed by the freshmen, the sophomores, and then the juniors. So. So that is the report from Alexa.
Well, thank you, Keith, and, uh, thank you, Alexa, for your, you know, tuning in at some other time. So thank you for your work on students, uh, representation on the board.
Okay, I wanted to clarify a date that I had for that CWSA showcase.
Oh, exactly.
On November second.
November second.
November five.
And then Keith, what time was the blood drive at?
Um, it'll be running, um, throughout the day.
Okay.
Where is the blood drive at?
It is in our gymnasium.
Is that during instructional time?
I believe I answered it, um, actually. I mean, I can't, Cody would be like me to answer that. I think.
The question is, um, first. Um, all right, policy governance, uh, moving forward then, uh, VR SR four monitoring reports. I will read a paragraph to that. Actually, I don't have to read that tonight.
Okay. VR SR four.
All right, so the SR four delegation of authority, the district administrator, uh, policy statement reads, "The means by which the board will direct the district administrator shall be through is written, uh, results and operational expectation policies. District administrator will be allowed any reasonable interpretation of these policies." Um, accordingly, and I'll read a couple here, uh, starting off with A, the board will maintain result policies specifying defined results to specified recipients. These policies will be revised and adopted in order of the process, the most general level first, and most specific levels afterward, as determined by the board. Uh, then one more I'll read C here, "Using a reasonable interpretation of the board's results and operational expectation policies, district administrators operate, develop administrative policies and practices, make all decisions, and take all actions, uh, deemed appropriate to achieve the board's results policies." Inclination of which has been the board's official policy, shown thereafter by administrative policies subject to revision by the district administrator within the constraints of operational policies. Um, I know we had a little bit of discussion of this during our board workshop, uh, last week. Were there any more thoughts, comments, things that developed over the week that we want to discuss regarding this policy? Or anything that Nathan you wanted to, since I know that we do have administrators here too.
Not on the, we, more, not on this one.
Um, so no further questions or comments? Okay. Um, so at this time, I look for emotions, we approve the SR four.
I move that we approve BR SR four.
Uh, first by Mark. Second by Dave. Uh, those on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. None motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Uh, next one here is O V five, treatment of students. Nathan, do you want to read that?
Yes. O V, would you like me to do the reading of it?
Yeah.
Right, okay, so. Policy statement, annually, the board shall assure the district administration establishes, maintains a learning environment, safe respect, and uses it to affect the learning. The district self-evaluation will be completed to put a table that outlines current issues for documentation to support elements of policy O V five, learning environment, treatment of students. And a note on this one is, well, I'll let you take that and I'll make my comment when you're ready.
Um, and again, we, we had a little thorough conversation on this during our board workshop too. Um, you know, we've, we've kind of gone a long way with communication and, you know, treating students. I just want to know if there's any further conversations tonight with board members, anything that kind of popped up, you know, for me?
There was a question at the board workshop, there were some additional questions about how the high school would use the students', um, survey. Uh, basically student engagement survey. We talked about how that was used at the middle school. That's for students grades, um, five through twelve. And, um, basically invited, uh, Keith to be able to prepare some conversation, just to give some quick, the board question at that point was, how was, how was that used? What type of initiatives would come out of that, that type of stuff?
Sure. And, um, yeah, to speak to how do we use the Gallup Student Poll, uh, certainly we look at overall trends. And, and the way that the Gallup Student Poll is structured is we, we cannot disaggregate. They don't share with us any sort of student level data. So it's really looking at the broad, what, what is the broad sense of the student body? And then making that kind of highlights important points for us, and then drilling down to some degree on other parts, like making changes with advisory this past year. Um, was one of, a change that comes in part from the Gallup Student Poll results. Pulling a lot of the various things that we had put into advisory out of advisory and giving that time for students and staff to really form relationships and staff to be able to focus much more squarely on students' academic and career plans. Looking at the one question on Gallup Student Poll is, there's an adult at school who cares about, well, that advisor really shouldn't, you know, the, a one, number one point of contact that a student should say, yeah, my advisor cares about me. Uh, so that's one way. And then also giving us data year-to-year trends to be able to look at what's been happening. We've been administering the Gallup Student Poll now for boy, seven years, eight years maybe. Um, and so being able to look at the longitude of that and to be able to show where we're making progress or where we're not making progress. Granted, it's a bit apples to orange. Obviously, those first students that took the Gallup Student Poll are now college graduates. And, you know, they're in the workforce and they're military, and they're all over the place, but not some of these high schools. Um, so that's, you know, a little bit there, but those are some of the ways really it helps us, gives us a sense, and then you're able to drill down. One of the things we're doing this year that comes up from the Gallup Student Poll is looking at, and then also the risk behavior survey, is looking at students and their sense of belonging. And we're doing more intensive work around our class of twenty-seven as our freshman class as kind of a pilot move. And then we've done some additional surveying of that freshman class to be able to look at, okay, if we do this, you know, will this increase the sense of belonging that students have? Um, in our freshman, we have certainly link crew. One of the things we did this past year using some funds from the mental health grant was send our Lincoln, link crew advisors to training. Two of the four had been through training previously on link crew. Two of them had not been through any kind of training. So they all went through training so that we were able to revitalize our link, um, program, which is really a freshman support program. We take upper-class students who then support our freshmen, um, throughout the first semester and a little more, a little bit kind of in the February, and then as it kind of starts to wind down. Um, also looking and continue to look at advisory as an important piece of what we do. And then also what we do with freshman seminar is another piece of where that belonging comes in. And part of that is because, and not too much related to the Gallup Student Poll, but related to the youth risk behavior survey has been the data around, research around students who identify a strong sense of belonging to school. The risk behaviors that they demonstrate go down significantly, um, you know, throughout the community, not, you know, not within the school, but throughout the community, those risk behaviors go down. So really trying to increase that sense of belonging is one important area that we can have more influence and control over than some of the other pieces. But, uh, yeah, the Gallup Student Poll is, it's an important piece of large data for us. You know, it's not giving us detailed data to the point where we can really drill down and do very specific things, but it gives us a holistic, but we can drill down.
One of the pieces, that we, um, talked a little bit about last time was that engagement number on the Gallup poll.
Yeah.
Do you know like where, where that stands, like on the cap bridge, uh, in the state or where are we at with that? Because it seems the, the not engaged and actively disengaged.
Yeah, so, um, those numbers throughout the Gallup, um, database went up significantly, disengaged numbers went up significantly. And that, that, that was the report that, that we saw was sadly we weren't out of line with, with what we were seeing. Um, that, uh, the pandemic had a significant impact on those numbers. And, and obviously, it's a trend that none of us, you know, had any control over in any way, shape, or form. I mean, you know, things had been trending well, and then pandemic hit, and, you know, everybody kind of got shuffled. So that, um, we aren't out of line compared to where nationally, we'd like to be in a much better spot. We'd like to be, you know, where they're looking at a saying, wow, those numbers are incredible, you know, really positive. But we're in about the norm. Now, what's sad is that Gallup has discontinued of the survey, so we're no longer going to be able to get that national comparison information.
Does the Y R B S include like the engagement piece on it?
It gives you a lot of information around that sense of belonging. That's where the Y R B S gives you a lot of information.
Yeah, Y R B S has an acronym means?
Good risk behaviors.
Okay.
So, and that one's administered throughout the, well, throughout the nation, but in Wisconsin through Department of Public Instruction, so.
Well, I think that focus that you have on belonging to will then increase that engagement.
Sure hope. That's the, that's the hypothesis.
And, and something the board talks about too with Gallup being discontinued, are there any plans for, um, you know, something new, or is you guys have kind of a, a Gallup poll and make something of your own?
What Nathan and I talked about is, yeah, just kind of, we have the questions. We have all the information that Gallup, they shared it with us. Um, and then we, they, they've basically released any kind of proprietary concerns over it and said, you know. I just think what it came down to is it just isn't, it's their business, and it just wasn't quite generating the revenue that you're making, continuing with.
Um, and then I did also want to highlight Humke. I know that, um, heading the day with those, with those circles and meeting with, with the students and the teachers, it was really nice to have that as a board, you know, helping out with mental health, wellness, and all that, and you were heading the day and stuff like that too. So, um, kudos to you guys. Any follow-up questions or anything you wanted to hear?
I would just ask if you all have any highlights that you want to share tonight, maybe working here or?
There, there is one that actually I was, that I was reading through here, and I think it's briefly mentioned briefly, but I was on a call with Wood County Health and Human Services with the other districts this last week. And one of the things that we've been partnering at both, at the elementary, at both at high And one of the things that we've been partnering at both, at the elementary, at both at high school and A M S, is they have what's called the Leo code. And they work with us to help us help teach students and they did it in set with seventh graders and they also do it with ninth graders. So they will help understand, here's how your brain develops, here's how you um act in times of stress, here's how this, here's your user guide to your brain and your motions in many ways. And one, and that has been very well received, that's part of the student, the seminar that comes through the freshman, seventh grader started that. And they also provide in addition to, they do that for the entire class, all, the entire seventh grade class, the entire freshman class got that. But they also provide additional counselors for people who are named as additional risk and they have people send in and. They were at, had those counselors work with the students in our schools to be able to get additional help as they come, and so. That's been a product, I, that just sort of came as a quick area, but just recognize that that's been a great partnership with, with County Health and Human Services for us.
And you, we were talking about Q P R a little bit too, um, the Q P R training that would be coming, or that was already conducted with, was it would be coming, came in for Q P R training?
Wood County hasn't come in, um, we used to throw a grant, um, Bryant, Bryant Murray, not Bryant, sorry. Bryant Murray used to provide that for our students at the high school, but he has since moved to a different location. So we are working with our Get Kids Ahead grant to work on certifying our middle school and high school counselor in that. So that way we have staff who can provide the Q P R training. And that's question, um, persuade and refer for suicide prevention, so that's what that's for.
I just had one more follow up question, I'm not sure if it's for Keith, um, or Lynn, but uh, you mentioned the mental health grant, giving you some funds. How, what, I mean, where are we at?
Can answer that, that's me. Um, the school mental health grant, so it used to be a grant that you had to compete for, it was a competitive grant. Um, our cycle went the last two school years, but last year when they, uh, when we applied. Part of the biannual budget, it went from a competitive to what's the term, categorical, um, program. So all school districts throughout the state will get money, they have not announced yet if that's going to be through the Get Kids Ahead program. Or which program that'll be through, but we did apply last year, it's just, it's no longer going to be existence, it's part of a categorical program.
And with categorical aid, you don't have to prove your expenses. Um, with a competitive grant, you have to file reports and make sure you have allowable expenses, it gives us a lot more flexibility.
But the nice thing by us writing the grant within moving to categorical, we already have a plan to how to use it to address mental health concerns, so.
All right, any other follow up questions for O V five treatments?
With the, with the Gallup survey, um, you, you've mentioned one of the things with Gallup. Conducted the survey, there's no way to tie like a student to the output, that's going to be a little bit more of a challenge if we're doing it internally potentially. Any thoughts on that or, I mean?
Um, there are, you know, various ways that, you know, like, some of the instruments that we've looked at, the collection instruments. There are various ways to make them anonymous so that we really can, you know, track it.
I just wanted to make sure, I figured you have an idea, I just wanted to make sure that that doesn't get blocked, because I know that could skew, you know, if, if that.
Could make it worthless.
Yeah, that, that, uh, if that impression got out there that there was a concern, you know, concern that it wasn't uh not anonymous anymore, that it would really skew results, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else, any comments coming from Ann or anything?
Nothing from Ann.
She had a couple of questions, I'll just encourage her to reach out, um, to you guys if you get those follow up, so.
There's nothing in the chat. Yeah, that was a while ago, she sent me that, once I knew she was good to go, so.
Okay, perfect. All right, so then at this time, I look for a motion to approve O V five treatment of students. So move, uh, first by Mark.
A second.
Jennifer, those on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none motion carried, thank you everyone, O V five treatment of students. Uh, and the last one here, O V ten communicating with the public. Uh, policy statement reads, the district administrator shall ensure that the public is adequately informed about the condition and direction of the district. Um, and just, uh, to read one off here, assure that the timely flow of information, appropriate input and strategic two way dialogue between the district and the citizens that those understanding and support the district. Um, and I did want to commend Nathan, he was having a lot of strategic planning as we were wrapping up the school board workshop last week, you know, he wants staff, community involved, parents. Um, so I think that's a big step we move forward with strategic planning and giving a good overall picture of the district, so, um, I'll open it up to.
So, and just a note to that is that we have, and I shared it at the annual meeting today, that I read through the reference to a strategic plan that referred to three main areas, one is academic excellence, one is. So, um, social, emotional work and also community equity. Um, one of the processes that we've been working under that since twenty twenty two, um, and so it's fairly area, new area, however, as a. At, at, a new administration as, as I'm coming in here, one of the areas that I want as a, I'd like to be, however, I'd like to work with the strategic plan that. Is being developed with community members, is being built with, um, staff members. Mo- much of the strategic plans that have been happening, at least my experience in the district, have been primarily an exercise, primarily informed by administrators, and I'd like this to be a wider spread. Um, to that note is I was, you know, as I've been reaching out to other districts, how they've worked together with that, um, they, I, they've identified a facilitator who would work with that. It's a, it would be a longer day process to, to, any community members, that would be a residence of the district, that'd be invited to come in and get their voices and be able to. And then work through a process, and so the hope for a, uh, the need for a strategic plan is not just to include more voices, but to be able to have that. Okay, here are our, our district priorities, here's where we spend our money, here's how we make our decisions, if it comes down to this versus that. How do we go ahead and use that as a framework to be able to problem solve with it? So that is, just is a way to get people on, on board with that, that's correct, when we're talking about communication, I feel that we have tools that are certainly. Working well and, and adequate, but we can do better when we're coming to sort, and, um, do that process. And so that's something that, as we're putting that together, um, that'd be something is developing a strategic plan on a more community wide basis. For more voices is something that we'd be looking at potentially at the end of next year or beginning part, end of this year, beginning part, end of this school year, to be clear. Um, beginning part of next, basically when we get that set.
Follow up, um, thoughts feedback for other board members, um, I know we talked a lot about, uh, parent square. You know, the, the weekly update that we get, uh, the quarterly newsletter that gets sent out, anything else come, come on between the workshop and to me? All right. Um, I will look for a motion then for O V ten communicating with the public. Who, uh, first by Dave. Second by Jennifer, uh, those on favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none motion carried, uh, O V ten, uh, thank you very much. Other board work, we are heading over back to Lynn Knight.
Yep, so I'm going to be talking, um, just about a third Friday count in September. Um, this is, uh, this, the, the state requires the district to perform two counts a year. Third Friday in September and second Friday in January. The third Friday in September affects the revenue limit worksheet, which we've already talked about, and the state aid worksheet, which is more complex than the revenue limit worksheet. Uh, the second Friday in January only affects the state aid worksheet. So it's really, it's much more complex than, um, just counting kids on a single day. So you start out with a head count and, uh, you, you count the kids as a head count. You look at all your open enrollment students out, which are residents, we add those back in. All the students that are not our residents that are attending here, we subtract them back out, that's, that's called our membership. And then we convert all of that to full time equivalencies. So I've included some graphs, I've included some graphs in, um, your board packet, just called that.
Yep, let me quick share screen so I can see.
Thank you. The first graph basically looks at district head count, so we had a head count of twelve thirty nine compared to twelve fifty last year. The second graph, it breaks it up between brick and mortar and virtual. Um, so as you can see, the virtual is pretty much, uh, well, we had a few increases, the, uh, brick and mortar is, uh, declining. Then I further broke it out by district transfer ins, so last year we had students coming into our district of three forty five, that increased to three fifty nine. Um, then I could, uh, broke that out even further to brick and mortar and virtual, so you can see where the kids are coming. Uh, if they're coming to the virtual school or the brick and mortar, um, schools. The next graph is, uh, the transfer outs, um, that's decreasing, which is good. Uh, we had a hundred and thirty four last year and this year we had a hundred, hundred and twenty four, these are our resident students that are going elsewhere. Uh, and then I looked at district F T E for the past four years, or the past, yes, four years. Uh, and again, we are slowly declining, this is the first year that we're not in the four digits. Um, I know that, um, so the next, that's bad, and then the final graph basically shows you a summary of it. Starts with the head count, transfer ins, transfer outs, and the F T Es. Now, the F T Es are what we talked about in the revenue limit worksheet. Uh, the revenue limit worksheet has nine hundred and eighty four F T Es, uh, there is a rounding issue, it's, it, it should be nine seventy eight. I complete this at the end of September and the budget I just completed, so it's a rounding issue, so it should be nine seventy eight. And we had six F T Es for summer school, so that equates to nine eighty four, which is on our revenue limit worksheet. Um, so this is basically just for your, uh, information. Um, if you need more information, I have a lot more graphs and I'd be happy to share them with you.
I just want to clarify the head count, does that include virtual?
Um, the district head count includes all students, yep, yep.
Uh, follow up questions for Lynn? Thanks for your work and I'm sure you're putting all the graphs and stuff together.
Well, that's the fun part.
All right, well, thank you, Lynn, uh, moving on to twenty three, twenty four tax levy approval, um, this includes a motion and then, uh, so. Um, anything more you wanted to add?
No, but we do have to read the motion.
Okay, thank you, so, um, again, I'll read it and then just motion a second. Uh, board president calls for a sum of thirteen million, seven hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and fifty. To be levy necessarily against all taxable property, the school district will include some in expenses, the school district for the twenty three, twenty four school year. And that's set them up to be placed in general fund, debt service fund, and community service fund as much. Um, so I have to sound like a motion for that. So, uh, first by Dave.
Second.
Second by Mark, and then, uh, you don't get to go.
Corey?
Yes.
Mark? Yes. And?
She's, she's here, she's online.
I can open up the chat to see.
Jennifer?
Yes.
With a majority vote, so I think we're, we're okay.
Okay.
So, board okay, with that, perfect, all right, so at this time, the motion is approved for the twenty three, twenty four tax. Uh, thank you and thank you again, Lynn. Um, we have one more here, twenty three, twenty four budgets. Approval again, same thing, we'll provoke a call vote, anything more you wanted to add? Um, at this time, the call for motion to approve the twenty three, twenty four budget as presented, looking for a motion.
So.
Dave?
Second.
Second by Mark, is that real call?
Corey?
Uh, yes.
Mark? Yes. And? Jennifer?
Yes.
Nice saying yes.
And we'll continue with the majority vote, the board is okay with that, we'll move forward with the motion then, um, that is approved, twenty three, twenty four budget, uh, in. Uh, Nathan, informational only, and, uh, Susan is here as well, uh, twenty three summer school report.
Oh, you want me to go with the analysis first? Yeah, okay, so, um, I, I always do an analysis for the, um, for the summer school, just to see, um. Where we're at and, um, I am in no way suggesting that we eliminate summer school, I am just here to report the numbers. Uh, but it is a losing program, but we do value summer school, I, I provide, I think there's something in the packet, is there? Or maybe not, I'll get it to you, I'm sorry, but there, it is a losing program, I think I've given you some data, um, probably for the past fifteen years. Pardon me?
You said losing program, just to be clear, mine was.
Yeah, it's a money losing program, correct, Nathan, you're absolutely right, but I'm in no way saying that we should stop it, just, I, I want to make sure that everybody understands that. Um, so I basically just deal with the numbers and the state aid, how much state aid we get, which is very volatile because of, um, how the state aid is calculated. Um, and the enrollment, I have to file a report at the end of the year, um, there are some ways where we can include, um, increase F T Es. I've talked to Nathan and we're gonna, uh, probably, uh, start working on that probably before February, so. Um, just, it could be a, in my opinion, it could be a very robust program, so we need to, to do work on that.
So, um, I put in the packet, and I just add each year, just a little short summary, so if you go down to last summer. Um, we had an increase in numbers, which I see it's cut, cut here, but it's on the table on the other side. So we had a total of a hundred and thirty seven students enrolled in six twelve summer schools. Um, and actually, fifth graders included in that as well, um. Which is forty or so students more than the summer before, and I think that's mostly because of some of our enrichment programs. And our, um, we're accelerating credits for high school students, so some of our eighth grade students earn F I A credit for. Um, their ninth grade year to get ahead on some of their credits, it creates more room in their schedules. And then we have a small handful of students who accelerated so that they can take upper level, um, science and math classes, their junior and senior years. So we're trying to kind of lean into that a little bit more to get some of those students some of those more opportunities, um, in there, if, if that's what they choose to do. And then, um, what I'm kind of excited about is that since COVID, um, our students who are credit deficient at the high school. Numbers have been pretty high, where they've been behind, some of our seniors take summer school plus another semester or even more to get caught up and graduate. Um, but at the end of summer school, all of our seniors from the Pusa High School graduated. So technically, they're, the way the state counts it is they're really not timed, because it's the graduating year, um. So all of our students in the high school were down to thirty seven students. And sophomore, junior and high, and senior year who are deficient in credits, and deficient can be a half of the credit, you know, so they can easily make that up. Um, but some students are more behind and, and so that's part of where the year before we were. Uh, well, before summer school started, we were fifty four students who were totally deficient, so, um. So it's good that that number is going down and things are getting a little bit more stable.
And, and I do like the girls from, from last year, that was a period of increase, so. Uh, good luck to them, and even also lost for many, it's, it's great for the kids in the school, so.
Just a short report on, so we have, the district runs two south, two sides for summer school, one of the high schools mentioned. And the other one is run at Humpy Elementary, it's primarily for, um, you know. Elementary age, grade, generally age grade five is how that, how that goes, although there, I'd say there's a number of middle school students who are always there helping. As that works out, um, for it, uh, we had total amount of students there was about a hundred and twelve, which is down from previous years. Um, just as a note, in most years, the elementary principal goes in and takes that, um, Mr. Spray's retirement coincided right with the beginning of the summer school. So I was, I was the principal record and there those days and, and sort of working with staff on that particular button. It, it's a blast, a lot of stuff going on on that particular area, but it's, it's, but we're not talking credit efficient, we're talking areas in which we're talking engagements. For example, one of the things we partner with, um, the Y M C A camp, that is right over, as you're heading over to Lake Napo, as you're going to the rivers. There's a Y M C A camp and there's an option for those families that are interested to be able to spend their Fridays, you know, out on the lake, they're doing a camp and. Not every takes advantage of that, but that is certainly an option, it's generally a half day program, so all parents are finding ways to. You know, not just academic enrichment, but activity on that, so that's, that's the nature of our split screen summer school, how that works.
Um, follow up questions then? If there's follow up, I'm looking for some. Uh, we're gonna head over to Keith Johnson then, uh, sir calls John.
Yeah, so this is, um, the pretty standard one that we do each year, we have a lot of applications this year, Carly from Mid State was really in, working with our students a lot to get. You know, to get those numbers up, uh, it's not, um. It's not set in stone what's on the sheet as far as course requests, because they will continue to work with Mid State to see which courses they're open, which courses they're closed. Um, so, looking for a motion to approve.
which course is their open and which course is closed. Um, so looking for a motion to approve, although what I would like to do this year, just kind of streamline some things, is if you could also include in a motion that if a student receives a failing grade, the family would be expected to reimburse the district for tuition costs. Allowable by state statute, but it has to be requested by the governing body, by the board. And so, so if you can just include that on the front end, that if a student were to fail their course, that they would be expected to reimburse the district for the tuition cost.
Uh, conversations with the board, um, thoughts on that?
Do you have a lot of students that don't?
Go ahead, a couple. Two in the time that I've been working.
Two out of ten years. Don't, don't have the number on paper.
But as the applications increase, the risk of the failing also increases as well. So.
If you had two in ten years, I'm, I'm okay with it, but I'm open to other board members thoughts, comments. Everybody okay with that? Nothing in the comments, so. All right. So I'm looking for a motion to approve, um, start college now. Um, application as presented with a clause that, um, if a student fails a course, they're expected to reimburse the district. Um, so I am looking for a motion.
Who?
Second by?
First by Dave, second by?
Jennifer?
Uh, those are all favor, please say aye. I oppose, none, motion carried. Thank you everyone. All right, consent agenda, employment, Heather agains, uh, the school nurse. And Cassandra Zach, uh, special education assistant. And then we also have, hold on here twice.
Okay, should be resignation for Kim Calmoff.
Okay. So, so then a resignation for Kim. And then what was her position?
She was a Alexander Middle School student. Okay. So, and just a quick note to speak about Kim, she's worked the district for several years and like worked with, you know, quite, she works, certainly when you pull late shift, there's not a lot to talk to, she knows very much. And, and working, we appreciate her service. We appreciate her work being in the force of the district. Anything you care to add, Jason?
No, I, I will echo that. She's, she's there and she's always fun, she's got a smile and, and it's, uh, uh, first I just got to know her, now I'm saying goodbye. So, great person, thank her for it.
Well, uh, thank you for your service and then uh, congrats to the new employments and hires of the school district.
And just as a clarification, we're hired, uh, head of dabs and school nurse. We have two school nurses, um, that work together. And so at any given time, this is a, so we have both of them, um, Jake, let's see.
No, Kami Lovner.
Kami Lovner and Heather Danz. And so we're, with all the, at any given time, we having two in rotation makes, help us cover the whole district and, and we've delivered great before.
Um, Dave, you want to read the donations?
Uh, duration of the inclusive dollar general during the two cases of lower street paper, in one case of composition notebooks. Uh, two hundred dollars in fees to give kids, don't donation for inclusive technology, anything you can have a frame, a backpack for kids, we have many dollars for limiting emissions, forty five dollars for sacred earth collections, seventeen dollars for filmmakers in C E, and eighty five dollars for that donation church.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for those supporting the district and your donations. Uh, greatly appreciated. Uh, just to wrap up here, um, minutes nine thirteen twenty three was a regular board meeting, ten eighteen twenty three was a workshop. Um, at this time, I'm going to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Uh, first by Mark. Second. Dave, those are all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. None, motion carried. And uh, just a little clarification, um, we're gonna move our next board workshop and board meeting one week over just um, to allow for some time and adjustments. So, um, it'll be November eighth, um, the workshop will be, um, at six P M. And then our other board meeting will be November fifteenth at six thirty. Question board, if not, um, at this time, I will look for a motion here. Those are all favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. Uh, motion carried, you adjourned. Thank you everyone. Uh, drive safely.